Guys, call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is a very curious statement.
Do compliance.
Okay. This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Infor-- South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, confirmed with Ms. Brock.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
To amend. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda. First of all, to amend, to add an executive session after item number 10, something we need to discuss, and that would be pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements to Fusky Island Ferry Service.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So, discussion?
Does this require us to have a two-thirds of county council?
No.
Or?
No action coming out of the plate.
Add it to the agenda. Right.
Okay. Other discussion?
Yeah, I just don't think it's the right place to add an executive session item to a workshop, especially on such short notice. I will not support it, and if it does pass, I will not be in that meeting.
I agree with Mr. Cunningham.
I'm going to say the same thing. I wanted to say that first, but thank you both for saying that. We will not support that.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments regarding the amendment?
No.
All right, we're going to do a-- could you read it for Councilman Dawson?
Yes.
I move that we amend the agenda to add an executive session after item number 10 for the purpose to receive legal advice related to pursuant to South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements to Fusky Island Ferry Service.
And any other discussion?
Yes. Let me just add that we've had things happen just since yesterday that I think that y'all should know about, and again, that's what this executive session would be about, is update on the ferry service just from yesterday.
Update or legal advice?
Any other comments?
Yeah, you'd be just one last one. Mark or?
We do it in public.
Councilman, why can't we do it right here then? And do that right in front of the people that we work for? I don't think it's not a big deal. If, I mean--
It's legal advice.
It is legal advice, is the reason.
We're not getting legal advice at all.
We don't know. At this point, I'd like to--
I'd like to add one more comment.
One more comment, and then we'll take a vote.
We had a conversation about some of these exact things on Monday, and we knew the conversations that could come after. So, it's not a surprise, no matter what happened yesterday. So, I have no problem calling a special call meeting and it being advertised, but there's no reason for this to be done within 16 hours of something coming out.
Okay. Ms. Brock, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
A yes vote would be in favor of doing the executive session.
Correct. Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Passamit?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
I'm mute, David.
Sorry, no.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Could you give us--
Five-five.
Five-five. Thank you.
No. Yeah. Five-five, because we're missing Councilmember McGowan.
McGowan, sign here.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make another amendment to the agenda. I'd like to amend the agenda to have 15 minutes public comment where it is now, number five, and then add public comment after number seven, after the USCB presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Brown. Discussion? Is there any need for a roll call vote on this amendment? Seeing none. By show of hands, we will-- this is a vote to split the public comment from 30 minutes to 15 minutes and 15 minutes. All in favor, by show of hands? Okay. That passed unanimously. All right. Now, we'll go to the agenda. We have 15 minutes of public comment. We had--
So, she's-- Ms. Beltwright's going to be at the second public comment. She's a school board member.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you for the reminder. All right. We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
A second to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
A second by Councilman Cunningham. Any discussion? Seeing none. All by show of hands to approve the amended agenda, and that is unanimous. All right. So, the public comment that we had a person sign up for would be at the second public comment.
Is that correct? Ms. Beltwright?
Yes.
You'd like to weigh it. Okay. Thank you.
We will take it then.
Madam Chair, I would like to point of order--
Yes, ma'am.
--that I-- in the Robert rules. In fact, your game is-- it's my understanding, some --one of my constituents sent me some disturbing information yesterday. Firstly, it's about the county chat that was at St. Helena on Tuesday night. These events are supposed to be for us to go and meet with our constituents where they live and find common ground on issues, and not to be handed misinformation yet again on county property has-- is has to stop. Secondly, we know that we are in public service and therefore are public figures. That's fine. Emails, county phones, all available. It's all public knowledge. But to physically distribute our home addresses, that's right, all of our home addresses on a sheet of paper is crossing the line. While may-- it may not be illegal, it's certainly immoral and intended to intimidate us as decision makers in a current political culture that we're all in, not just locally but nationally as well. This is something that should be taken extremely serious while being dealt with swiftly. I'm going to ask our administrator, Michael Moore, to instruct his staff to send a demand letter to this organization's-- the head of this organization, and publicly come to us and apologize. I'm asking our chair to do the same thing that county council and Charleston County did a few years ago. Here's the information, and this is one I want to show you, Mr. Moore. This is a sheet of paper with all our home addresses on one sheet.
Let me clarify. Where was this handed out?
They were at the table outside chat.
Oh, okay. I didn't-- I didn't see it. Okay. Okay.
I didn't see it either, Madam Chairman. I was there.
I was there too, and I didn't see it. Okay.
You can pass that on to Mr. Moore.
Well--
And that's all I have to say.
We don't know who put that paper out.
It's on there, on the front page. Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they were--
We don't need to discuss it.
Okay.
We can go on to the next thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I did not see that that night. All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have-- we'll have public comment later after the second one. At this time, Technical College of the Low Country will present. And you want us to wait to the end to ask questions, probably, or?
I'll be brief. I want to hand this out.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And just to kind of recap, in front of you is what we had understood to be the funding for the Regional Workforce Training Center. One of the points to remind all, we can't move forward with construction in our state process until we have all the funds for the construction, do you know, of it. You notice that the college does have capital reserve of over 1.6 of its own money in the process—in the process to— On behalf of Dr. Goff right now, we're going—we want to, as of October 15th, move forward. We've been talking about this in the community now for two years. It's time to really turn that dirt and get this done, so we're committed to that. Dr. Goff has walked into the room.
What timing.
Thank you. Grand entrance. Rich, I just said that by October 15th, we want to move forward—
Yes.
—with the project. At the bottom, there's some scenarios. It's the funding scenarios. As council knows, the college has been operating with the assumption that council had invested seven and a half million into—the project. We were unaware of the—the bond conversations. Do you know, we did not ask council to bond on behalf of the college. We simply asked for the seven and a half—seven and a half million. So we appreciate the situation that we're all in, do you know, right now. Before you have questions, kind of one more point that I just want to point out to council. Interestingly, Beaufort County's labor participation rate is below South Carolina's and it's below the nation's. One of the reasons for that is our reliance on accommodations and food service. Do you know, in season, about 43, 44% of employment is all in that sector. Seasonal average is 34%. Wages are low in that. On the back, you're seeing, and these are South Carolina wages, the Regional Workforce Training Center will increase those wages and will increase labor force participation. Locally, labor force participation is low because of mostly discouraged workers, and it's a vulnerable sector to work in. So I do want to point that out, that when we do get the Regional Workforce Training Center up, it's going to help our economic development community, it's going to increase wages overall, and it's going to increase our tax base, too. So it's going to increase private and public income. So, Dr. Goff, would you like to add anything?
I'm not sure what all you said. I'm sure it was perfect.
Well, you had just started. You walked right in. So with that, I think the conversation is all of us kind of understanding where we are right now.
I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Ms. Carons, I think one of the most important things—not most important, but something very important—is how you're focusing on retention, too. I think all you said is great, but one of the key things that we need for nurses, plumbers, whatever, is retention. So I think you're doing a lot in that regard as well, which I think we should know.
We are doing a lot with that, and do you know, the Technical College of the Low Country is the community college. Do you know, 80% more of our students come from our communities. Do you know, it's a—it's a value that I learned moving here, the value of living, loving, working, and worshiping in your home community. More than 90% of our students go right back into these communities, and that includes the nurses, the physical therapists, the surgical technologists, the radiology technologists. At any given time, every one of us in this room, every day, encounters a graduate of the Technical College of the Low Country. They are foundational to the quality of life with many, like myself, moved here to enjoy. You know, we're not the only project in the room, and every project is good, but we are the workforce for yesterday's projects, today's projects, and tomorrow's projects. And I think—I know that we want to diversify this economy, and it's the Regional Workforce Training Center that will be a pillar to that. We were all part of TS Conductor when they came, and they're here, and that's—that's great.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
But I will tell you that the promise of this Regional Workforce Training Center played a big role in that conversation when we met with them, that we will be able to train in these technical fields, which is going to increase the wages and the salaries of everyone, do you know, of the individuals, do you know, who are—they may be underemployed, but they still have a lot of capability with the—you know, with the training. But speaking kind of as we wear both hats, do you know, we're also part of the economic development community. Sometimes it's just the dance of a thousand veils when you cannot point to, touch, see, smell, that we can do this, and this is what the Regional Workforce Training Center is going to give to our community.
Can I just follow up?
We're going to take turns. All right. Councilman Passamit was next.
EDA grant.
Yes.
Status?
We actually have two. One is submitted. Given the circumstance, we would have to pull that one because unintentionally misrepresented how—the money was coming from. However, that said, I don't expect the first one to be funded. That was submitted, then changes that the administration made in the EDA. I don't think that's—I think it's going to stay on the digital shelf.
Not viable.
Right. It's not viable.
Okay.
I'm about to submit the second one. We've gotten assistance from Congresswoman Mace's office, from Senator Graham's office, and out of McMaster's, out of the governor's, do you know, office. So we're more hopeful with this—with this second one. And I can't say for certain what the impact would be right now on the—on the dollars it would qualify for with—when I remove the seven and a half from the—from the funding formula, or the six.
Six.
And remove—the six, yeah.
That was going to be my second point, was is the state more amenable to funding programs like TCL? I know the earmarks have gone away, but I know that because of the economy and what's happening in the state of South Carolina and the workforce that's needed, the state is well aware of the system that we have and that this fits in perfectly for what we need and want to do for the future.
Absolutely, and there's always a lot of words to that. And we were all there when the governor said we're the best technical college in the—in the system. Loved to—loved to hear that. But earmarks did go away. We were counting on additional money from the state this past year. We did not receive that. The state does fund the SCWINS scholarship, which supports free tuition in many of these, like nursing. However, those funds have decreased for us this year also. So we don't see—I don't—I wouldn't expect next legislative session to really see further state investment in the Regional Workforce Training Center. And we don't want to—we have promised this community—we've actually been talking about this since 2016. We've promised to do this. It's the president who said, October 15th. Do you know, if we can't do the 50,000 square feet, do you know, we can review programs and take it down to make it fit the money instead of making—we can make it fit the money, or we can make it fit the need. If we have to make it fit the money, then we'll make it fit the money.
Any council member who hasn't asked any questions? Yes, Councilman Cunningham.
I was just racking my brain of when we talked about this last year, and one of the biggest question I remember asking then was other helps from surrounding counties that send students there. And if I remember correctly, there's two questions I asked. One of them was, what's the percentage of Jasper County to Beaufort County that goes to the school? And then, secondly, why is there such a disparity in the dollar amount?
About 10% is Jasper County's, do you know, enrollment, and a lot of that is due enrollment. There's been a big increase in due enrollment, high school students attending Tino College and Tino at the same time. Jasper's committed a million. They went from zero to 100 miles an hour, do you know, in the history of their funding to the college. And, Councilman, I really think kind of what the disparity is, is the ability. I think Jasper is increasingly capable of committing and funding, investing in this kind of infrastructure, and workforce is infrastructure. It's as much infrastructure as the roads that we—that we drive and the bridges that we cross. Our other counties, Hampton just does not have the be—the ability to contribute. Colleton, very recently, and they're—in a different way, Colleton very recently provided the college with about—it's about 22,000 square feet. It's the Colleton Career and Skills Center. They are providing all the operations and allowing us to—that enables us to bring in workforce training programs, do you know, in Colleton. But I think sometimes when we look at the counties, this is the bifurcation of what each county is capable of. Beaufort County's always been a leader in this region. It's always been a leader in supporting education and workforce training, and we're grateful, do you know, for—for that.
Councilman Bartholomew, do you—oh, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I do agree with basically word for what you said. That's kind of why I have a hard time with it, because Jasper just approved 2,000 homes last year, and now just announced they're trying to approve another 3,000 to 4,000 just last week, all right on the border of Jasper County and Beaufort County, which means they are going to be on our infrastructure. So we are—we have been the leader in it, but we've also now we're behind the eight ball because we've been the leader in it on our roads, our school system's catching up now. But so that does take a toll on it when you say the tax revenue does come, but still, when you take that tax revenue back to Jasper County, that takes a hit on us as well.
I think Jasper will continue to invest in the college and the workforce training center. I really do with that. And just if you allow me, because this is an investment, and it's an investment for the county on what you're already investing in, and particularly the Beaufort County School District. So our partnership with the Beaufort County School District, especially the Tides program with this Regional Workforce Training Center, there are 50 students attending full-time, 50 Beaufort County School District students attending full-time at the New River Campus. When this is built, they can go straight into—I mean, they literally walk across the campus into these workforce programs. And it's really important, as we all know, that we keep our workforce local, that we keep our young people engaged in our community, educated about the family sustaining careers that they can have here, because we need that workforce. So it's—but my point really is that when—investing in the Regional Workforce Training Center is building on investment in the Beaufort County School District, it's building on investment in all your other investment.
I'm going to call on David Bartholomew because he's the liaison now, too, and see if he has any questions. Do you have any, David, or comments?
Don't really have any questions from Ms. Carons, but I have to go back and look at the plain language of the resolution that we passed. And it does appear, and I'm trying to remember the conversation from last year, it does seem like our intent was to fund this as a investment, and I have seen internal communication from the previous CFO, and it seemed like—it seemed like we were taking— and not necessarily burden, it's a good investment, but we were taking this on, and we would figure out how to distribute those funds over the next three years without impacting the military TCL reserves. I believe there was still some skin in the gun by TCL for any over-due diligence to help pay back that, but I believe the bulk of the debt was our responsibility or investment. And I think this project is a wonderful, wonderful project because as we attract companies here, we're able to train here instead of those companies having to bring people out of state to build it. So it goes hand in hand with that. And I have to go back to the plain language of the resolution that we passed, and it seems like it's more of a grant investment from the captain. And I want to stand by that resolution.
Thank you for those comments. I'd like to ask Ms. Pinky to come forward to explain to council what we're at, what you're at, what—the path forward is, I guess, what we're asking.
I think at this point, council just needs to direct us if—whether you want this to be, because originally it was presented as that 6 million was going to be a part of the bond issuance, and the debt would be repaid with the additional .1 mil increase and additional revenues from the value of a mil increasing. That's what was decided and passed on by council when you signed up for the bond, when you approved the bond ordinance, and that's what was presented by the First Tryon Advisors whenever they came and did that bond presentation. TCL saw it more of a grant, like Councilman Bartholomew just said, and we're not aware that it was going to be debt service associated with the investment. So at this point, the resolution is as council approved, but we need to know whether you want this to be a grant moving forward, or are you planning for this—the debt that's associated and what was approved in the bond ordinance to move forward. So that's the discussion for council.
Any questions regarding what Ms. Harriet just said? Yes, sir. Councilman Glover?
Just for my clarification, I'm more in line with what Mr. Bartholomew just said a few minutes ago, that I thought it was more of a grant investment into TCL. So my question is, with the collection, was there sufficient funds to pay for the debt service?
Currently, the additional .1 mils does not cover the debt service for that $6 million. So if that is the case, the intent of giving TCL an additional .1 mils was to service the debt. A lot changed from the previous administration and CFO to now, and the bond issuance originally that was presented to you was $90 million. It was dropped down to about 70, 68, and some change. And then, at that point, timelines had changed, and none of that was, you know, communicated with TCL, and there was a lump sum payment made on March 1st soon as we closed on the bonds. They were not aware of that either. Like I said, a lot of things changed between then and what actually occurred when bonds actually got issued. So the .1 mils that was passed as a part of the fiscal year 2025 budget and the additional revenue does not cover the debt service for TCL's portion of that bond issuance. So if it is council's intent to just make this a seven and a half million investment over the course of the three years as the resolution states, we will pull the .1 mils back and re-appropriate it to debt service because we are now servicing that debt. Does that make sense?
Let me follow up on this, then. What happened with USC? Because I thought we handled USC and TCL at the same time with the same—
Previously, USC being TCL split .1, right? .1 mils apiece from the higher ed allocation.
That's separate, though, right? It has nothing to do with the bond.
That goes towards both entities' operations, and that remained the same. But in fiscal year 25's budget, because of this investment and the debt associated with it, you increased TCL's by .1 mils. And then the terminology that's written in the bond ordinance is the increase in the value of a mil generated, as well as the .1 mils, would service this debt. So this all came about when we were reaching out to TCL to do an IGA in terms of the debt service. But they were under the understanding that it was going to be a grant versus a service of their debt, because obviously they'll have to book it as a liability if they sign it.
Then we also issue bonds for USC?
No, we did not.
We did not?
You did not. Sorry, I wasn't here at the time.
Okay.
But at that—at that time, the two areas that you invested in with the 2025 bond issuance was $10 million towards BMH and then $6 million towards TCL. And then the .15 was addressed in a different resolution to be split up over the course of three years. So the total investment was 7.5.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Larson?
So again, my understanding was we increased it to cover this amount. How long would it take the increase to cover the amount that—because again, that was the reason that we increased it, was to cover some of this. So how long—how long would it take us to at that .1 mil?
The .1 mil does not cover the debt service payment annually at this point. So—and as you know, value of a mil changes every year, so—
Yes, sir, Councilman Larson?
And so again, my understanding was we increased it to cover this amount. How long would it take the increase to cover the amount that, because again, that was the reason that we increased it was to cover some of this. So how long, how long would it take us to, at that .1 mil?
The .1 mil does not cover the debt service payment annually at this point. So, and as you know, value of a mil changes every year. So until the value of a mil reaches what their debt service payment would be for the year, that's, I could not tell you because mil values change annually.
This is a workshop, so we just kind of need to get a temperature of the, of the council of, yes, go ahead.
Any other questions that relate to what was actually passed via the resolution and/or your budget ordinance from last year?
Yeah, Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I understand that we're on that board here. Is there any potential chance we could use a union with general fund to help cover portions of that and get that debt already accounted for?
It just depends on what council wants to do. Once we decide what the actual decision is, we'll come up with options for council to continue with the contribution and/or not.
That would be great.
That would seem logical because we actually have a resolution that has been passed. Now, administration has to come back to us and say A, B, C, D based upon that resolution.
If you choose to move forward with this investment, then we will bring you options to decide.
Different options.
And I would just say, not hearing any objection. I'm over here.
Oh, sorry, I'm like looking all around. Boy, I was like.
Sorry about that. We're going to move forward with the resolution as the commitment to Mr. Passment's point. And what we would suggest then is we will work on an intergovernmental agreement with TCL and work on the financing part of this. And it'll most likely involve a budget amendment down the road. So that's what you will expect to see, just gauged on where you all are today.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions?
Just last one, Ms. Corns, is that good with you?
I'm not sure I understood it, so.
That's why I want to make sure you get that before we.
To keep it, you know, keep our simple minds, my simple minds. I guess I need this, is it too simple to say? Is it a yea or nay?
We can't, we can't give a vote. This is a workshop, so.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I just said you can't take a vote today.
Can't take a vote. So we just wanted to, like I said, get the temperature of the group.
But what I'm telling you all is administration's going to proceed with this resolution as a 7.5 million dollar grant and we're going to bring forward the actions that are necessary.
With some options.
Thank you, that's perfect.
I think what Mary Lee is asking is, is council's intent to fulfill the resolution? Is that correct? The 7.5? That's her here, Nate, she's not asking for a vote.
What you showed here, the 7.5 million dollars as part of this, you are just short the 5.8.
Right, and that's what's in the EDA grant right now.
Mr. Horbert?
The consensus seems to be that.
Put the microphone down. Yes, that answers my question.
Without taking a vote.
That's the consensus.
That's the consensus. Okay, all right. Any last comments before we move on with the agenda? Okay?
Thank you.
Is that, is that good?
Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you, thank you both. Next on our agenda is the USCB Sand Shark 2020 Arena Presentation and Discussion presented by Dick Stewart. And Dr. Penu, welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this workshop and update council on this exciting initiative. But let me first begin by acknowledging that this year, USCB has been engaged in celebrating the 20th anniversary since becoming a four-year degree granting institution. And I bring this up because this body's vision and support was absolutely crucial to that particular anniversary, what it signifies and what it has been able to accomplish and to achieve for our region. Just before the pandemic, just to give you some perspective, USCB was ranked among the top 10 institutions in the country amongst the fastest growing institutions. And of course, with the pandemic, there was a change for the whole landscape of higher education, but we have since been recovered and again on the path to growth. And we're not even talking about the economic impact that has been experienced by the institution over these years. And I'll get back to this theme because currently, as we've been celebrating this 20th anniversary and looking at what's going to happen in the next 20 years, we were reminded of a plaque that we have in our facility that acknowledges actually the work of the Beaufort County Council. And we feel like it marks a very special occasion to continue on that pathway. But I'm here, and we're here to talk and brief on the work that has been taking place with regard to the journey that we've been on for the past five years, dealing with multi-purpose facility that we started off five years ago as a joint venture between county and the state. The necessity wasn't just to meet the athletic events that needs that we have at USCB, but commencement, it was for tournament, it was for conferences and concerts and performance and trade shows and emergency response. We've had those conversations for quite some time. Every year, we've given a little bit of an update on where we have been with regard to securing some of the funding that is needed. As I indicated, from the get-go, we partnered in a way where the state and the county could be contributors. As a matter of fact, Senator Davis tells me that the late Senator Leatherman was excited and supportive of this initiative precisely because of the commitment on a local and state partnership of this initiative. We secured a little bit of a commitment also on the design work as we were accumulating some funding from the state. And there was an appropriation made at a county level that we really never took advantages of for a variety of reasons with regard to starting the design. But more importantly, last year, as we updated council, it resulted in a formation of a working group to be able to explore our next steps in funding mechanism as the state was approaching, every year, the trenches that were appropriated at the state level that were approaching their limit. I will also point out that about three or four years ago, USCB was able to, for the first time in its history, form a University of South Carolina Beaufort Education Foundation. Today, Dick Stewart is the vice chair for the Education Foundation for USCB. And I'll be asking him, as part of the working group that was at work here, to give us some update on the work that has taken place since. And then I know we'll have a lot of questions that we would want to engage in. And Chairman Passamont from last year, you recall, the county, the council authorizing the work group. And so I'll ask Dick to please come and provide the update and then we'll engage in questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penu. Thank you for members of council. First, thank you for your service and being here. I know this is a nice way to spend your mornings and when you ran for office, you knew you'd be receiving nothing, but thank you and accolades from everyone. And on behalf of those who owe it but haven't delivered it, please allow me as a taxpayer and a voter to thank you for your service. I sat in those chairs and I don't recall ever winning a popularity contest, but I got a lot of thanks in private. This is a public one. Before we get into the what of Sand Shark 2020, let me tell you about the why that I am here. I returned home in 1998 after having graduated high school here in 1967. During the period of time that I was gone, Councilman Glover may remember when we taught people to be bricklayers and masons here, and a lot of our young people learned those skills and went to Baltimore, Philadelphia, New York, and Washington, had successful careers, and some like me, when they retired, came home. I was in the wireless business, which did not exist when I graduated from high school. So there's no training when I graduated from college and no preparation from that. In fact, a counselor told me as I was a senior approaching my senior, a junior approaching my senior in college, I should go into recreation. And I said, why? He said, well, the productivity of American workers is so great that in a few years, we'll only be working 20 hours a week and we'll need a lot of recreation activity. I thought he was a little nuts then, and I'm confirmed that I think he was a little nuts because if any of you can do what you need to do in 20 hours, I need to talk to you about what you can help us with in that other 20 hours. So when I returned, this was the fastest growing state in South Carolina. We were the wealthiest by property values on a per capita basis. Charleston sends us past us. And I asked the question, why don't we have a four-year college degree granting institution here? My friends who served on the state Board of Trustees for USC and on the Higher Education Commission said, we were next in line. When we got 1,000 full-time equivalent students, we would get that honor. I said, well, where's that written? Well, it's not written, but that's what they did in Myrtle Beach. After nearly losing friendship with those folks, I went to Columbia and checked into a hotel and read the story about how coastal Carolina became what it is today. That story was peppered with statements through there, we've got too many four-year colleges in the state we don't need anymore. So I have since come in my humorous, I hope, way to describe that as us sitting down here in the Low Country where it was comfortable and pleasant and not doing the hard work of spending time in Columbia, which I'm happy to say our legislative delegation now seems to be really good at. We stayed here and we hoped the nice folks in Florence and Greenville and Columbia and Charleston would divert resources away from their favorite colleges and universities and give them to us because we're really nice people. The problem with that program is we have never found a case where that existed. It has not worked anywhere and they certainly didn't feel like they were in line to do that. So we formed a group called the Citizens for a Four-Year University. We had wide support and we had a panel and the panel was on USCB campus in Beaufort because this campus in Bluffton that we will be at tonight did not exist. There were about 400 people there. On the dais was the head of the Marine Corps Air Station, Marine Corps Paris Island and the Naval Hospital. They all said, we need a four-year university to keep those bases ready, keep them functioning for the enlisted personnel and for the private personnel. And the hospital person said, if we're going to recruit surgeons and doctors and healthcare professionals, we need the cultural richness that a four-year university provides. The head of Beaufort Memorial said essentially the same thing about recruiting healthcare professionals. And the head of the school district said, we've got to have some local teachers here. We can't just keep importing them and playing that routine as they come in and out. And I'm delighted to tell you that two weeks ago, three weeks ago at Rotary Club, I was at, the principal of one of the Ladies Island Schools said that 18 of her teachers are USCB products. So I'm delighted to see that and I think, Mr. Cunningham, you went through the USCB program. So now, what did we do about that? I'm pleased to say that county council chairman that was on that dais and said, we've got to have this, was one of several elected officials that said that. And within a few months, this county council took the lead and put in place a TIF agreement for $38 million. 25 million to start USCB here, 13 million to start TCL in the Bluffton campus. That $38 million bond was to scheduled payoff over 30 years. It paid off over nine because it was funded by property taxes created by incremental growth. Now, at that time, Jasper County was complaining because we had all these people moving into Bluffton and using their infrastructure, going back and forth. So there's always going to be that, you know, good fences make good neighbors sort of argument. But here's where we sit today. 20 years ago, we weren't sure we could recruit students to come. People raised that question. We weren't sure we could recruit professors to come. People raised that question. We weren't sure the community would support it. People raised that question. And so the answer to all of those questions is, we can recruit the students, we can recruit the professors, we can recruit the other things and the community support. But what's underneath all of this is the fact that we live in a dumbbell economy. And I don't mean intellectually, I mean economically. There's a group of people that are wealthy, often retired people that are doing quite well. There's a relatively small middle class, the bar of the dumbbell. And over here, there is some extreme poverty in our county and the surrounding counties in places most of us don't go very often and not behind the gates where the economic profile of folks oftentimes looks and feels pretty homogeneous. I am the first generation college student in my family. My wife is a first generation college student in her family. Neither of my parents finished high school. When I graduated from high school, I had no expectation of what the college experience was going to be. It turned out that I had a good experience and I've learned a lot and I've been successful because I've surrounded myself with smart and capable people. When I look back and think about the experiences I had, it wasn't what I learned because my undergraduate degree was education. Instead, I learned how to learn. I learned how to work in groups. I learned how to get along with people and I learned how to make contributions to success. We're now living in a time where companies like Amazon, Google, Meta, all those did not exist until the mid 1990s. Wireless didn't exist. Artificial intelligence is just now being talked about. None of us know what the future is going to look like 20, 30, 40 years from now. What we do know is that we can teach everyone work skills, we can teach everyone technical skills. What we can't teach people very easily is the importance of being part of a group, being able to manage that group and being able to grow. I will tell you that because of my experience in my undergraduate work, I went on later to do much better and perform better when I was a grown-up in my graduate work. But then when I came home, one of the things I wanted to do was help mentor young people and give them some advice. And I got a call from a friend of mine who wanted to meet with two, meet with two young African-American men. I said, I'm happy to do it. Said, have them call me. They can't call you. So why not? They're too intimidated to speak with you. That was my mistake. The reason for that is they didn't have the self-confidence that I had gained by being through college and understanding that I could compete with other people and could do well. We owe that to those people that are living here in poverty and don't have the chance to go off to college like I did. You and your leadership opportunity have the chance to make an investment that will change not only the lives of those people, but because of the presence in our community of the intellectual resources and cultural resources, change the quality of healthcare, change the quality of capital formation. And capital formation is going to be very important to create business here. If you look at your comprehensive plan, back when I first came back and read it in 98, when they were first required, the economic development part was a page and a half, as I recall. And it said, we like high-tech, non-polluting industries. Well, show me the community that's not looking for that. I was unable to find one. So if we're going to have that, we're going to have intellectual capacity. The reason they have to have intellectual capacity is capital follows it. That's how companies get formed and that's how when we train people to do things, they can stay here, work and contribute to the economy. And we have a looming issue. I'm the first part of the baby boomers. I was born in '49. It's called a boom because there's so many of us. We will be dying out. As we do, some of these age-restricted communities are going to have more age restrictions.
Don't remind us.
Excuse me?
Don't remind us.
I admire the need to be, you know, you and I live in the world of reality. There are those folks that live in the world where it should be this way, but you and I both are.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
And thank you for saying that I look younger than I do. I'm sure that's, oh, in any event, if you didn't mean that, I'll tell my wife that she agrees with you. So the point being, who's going to live in our houses? Who's going to create jobs? Who's going to sustain our economy? It's not going to be just retirees. It's going to have to be people that are contributing to the economy. And if we're going to do that, let's look at some of the needs we have locally. We live in a place and we can talk about how beautiful it is. One of the reasons it's beautiful is because of our waterways and the environment we live in. We have more salt marsh here than anyplace else in the state of South Carolina. South Carolina has more than anyplace on the East Coast. The significance of that with Jasper County is that's 200,000 acres of salt marsh which quester 4 million carbons, pounds of carbon each year. But because of the change in development patterns and other things, including storm water management, the May River is not as salty as it once was. If we continue that path, the salt marsh in the May River will be gone. If it goes, so will the species that it relies on and so will that salt marsh and so will the other things that caused a lot of us to want to be here. That doesn't mean that has to happen. That does mean that's a scientific issue, that's a research issue, that's a management issue that the USCB Water Quality Labs plays a role in addressing. I don't know what healthcare is going to look like in the next decade or two. I'm absolutely sure it's going to be changed a lot. The human genome. Human genome, AI, lots of issues. We're going to need intellectual capacity to keep training people for changing. I ran a company in the wireless business where I went to see a guy, AT&amp;T. He had 23 people in the room, and he spoke to them like this, and I was offended for them. He said, you see these people? Yeah. They're managers, not because they know anything about management, but because they came to work here three years ago. If we've grown so fast that they're now in charge of managing people and they don't know what they're doing. And I'm saying, I don't know what they're doing either, but I'd be polishing my resume if I worked for you. But the point being, the need to learn, the need to know how to work in a group, the social aspects of being on a college campus, experiencing those groups, and interacting with people different than yourself, shapes how humans view the world. When I came back from having benefited from work with a lot of different organizations in a lot of different areas, including building some of the first cellular systems in Africa, I saw things here and opportunities here that mean a lot to me. That's why I'm spending my time on this education foundation. That's why I served on the education foundation at TCL when we were trying to get things moving back into 2002 range. And we're now here today, after years of time and effort, not to go back and ask the questions about will they come, not to ask the question about whether a program will be successful, but to give you an opportunity to participate in something going forward. Let me describe the what to you and then recommend to you what we'd like to see you consider. Quinn, would you bring that up? We didn't provide this on the overhead, because then other people would be looking at it, and I'm not sure you would have been able to see it.
Upside down.
And I'm going to pass these out for you. These brochures describe Sand Shark 2020, and it also has what you will see us talking about. Thank you. So we know we're calling it Sand Shark 2020. This is... So let me orient you if I could. Dick? This is inside your brochure.
Dick, would you put that in front of the podium and bring it?
Certainly.
He can't see it on the end.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in here.
Except for then, everybody.
Thank you.
This is in the brochure. The question is, what does USCB need to be to fulfill the opportunities that are presented to us?
Your wife, yeah.
Let me just mention to you as well, that part of that objective is to engage the community. We are talking about an arena and convocation center in which cultural events, educational events, plays, concerts, athletic events, all will occur. If my numbers are right, and this includes Jasper County, 32% of the residents of Beaufort and Jasper County have lived here less than five years. They don't know this university is 20 years old, and they're not as engaged as they could be. We also know our volunteers and newcomers are often the folks who are very interested in helping with things. So what this project does is it brings on campus competitive athletics, convocations, graduations, graduations from a high school, if you would. It's a 4,500-seat arena convocation center. It also, if you put seats on the floor, could be increased to up to 4,900. That includes the area necessary to support its activities, and by that I mean event space, storage space. I'm going to try to stay back here, because I want you to hear what we're saying. It also includes, in this phase of the project, if you look at this area, athletic fields, we currently, USCB, plays baseball and softball at a park in Hardyville. It's okay, we appreciate it, thank you very much. We negotiated upfront when there was no other choice, but it's not a great experience for the athletes, it's not a great experience for their parents, and it's not a great experience for Hardyville to have to give up that time. We'd like to bring that on campus. Those facilities coming on campus along with the track facilities give us the opportunity for USCB to not only compete, and Quinn is here, Quinn is the athletic director, Quinn Moynihan, and he can tell you that we're coming out of Division II probation with the NCAA, and we would have been in the championship tournament this year in basketball for men's, except we were provisional. We need this to get the community involved and have the kind of programs you would expect with a university. We also will tell you that I think its experience would tell us that last year in the presidential election, we had people that wanted to bring together a big group and have forums. There's no place in Beaufort County or Jasper County to do this. This will be the largest facility between Charleston and Savannah. This will be a Mecca for folks. Now, if you look at the rest of the plan, I want to point out the track facility back here. And the reason I want to point out the track facility is those of us who were baby boomers, and you may remember, your former fellow council member, Herbert Glaze, has been a woman's track coach in the Beaufort County School System for 55 years. He's never been criticized or had any question about his morals, ethics, or performance, and some of the finest young women I've worked with, and they're young to me, they're middle-aged to them, are products of his track program, and some of them have been to state championship. When I was in school, the Beaufort Relays were the premier track event in the state of South Carolina. People came from all over the place to compete here. Let's have those come back, and I'll contribute to you, I'll commit to you that my family will make some contributions to have the Herbert Glaze Beaufort Track Relays competing on this facility at this campus as soon as it opens, and we'll contribute some money for prize money to bring in those schools from around the state. And the reason I mention that is these things attract travelers who spend money in your hotels, spend money in your restaurants. And if you look in the program at the bottom, next to the stadium, you will see the arena, a hotel on this side and a hotel over in Jasper County. The reason those are shown there is that's part of the future plan, because people coming to USCB for events will be staying in hotels. That will produce property taxes, that will produce accommodation taxes, that will produce economic growth. USCB will not be running those hotels. USCB plans, those of us in the education foundation are helping, to initiate RFP for a professional firm, I think Marriott, Hilton, one of those, that will run the arena as well as the hotels, and they would have to put money in to invest that. So you would see a return on that project. You will also see in here some proposed bridges to cross 278. There's discussion about whether those will be golf cart, bicycle, and pedestrian, or also will include cars. That's a decision we expect to be made, as Jasper County commits to their funding to support this program in the future. We're not asking you to do that. We're asking you to join with the state, and the state's committed just about $3 or $4 million to this project. So unlike the first time, when Beaufort County had to fund 100% of the cost for USCB to become a four-year school, and 100% of the cost to get TCL's Bluffton campus started, we're now in a situation where we're asking you to provide two-to-one match to the state. And the reason we're doing it is because costs have gone up. We didn't expect them to go up as much as they have, and we didn't expect the cost of construction to escalate like it has. But as a result of that, we need $120 million to fund this project. The state's providing 40. We're recommending an MCIP, which we've worked with staff on, and the numbers exist that support borrowing the money necessary out of an MCIP. Those funds, just like the TIF that we used the first time, will be repaid out of property taxes. Now, there will be people who say, we shouldn't do this, because it may take a penny out of somebody else's pocket. I'm a property tax payer. I'm not, you know, I'm not the biggest, I'm not the smallest, but it's a significant amount of money in our realm. And I can tell you that I view this to be a property tax benefit, because this intellectual component and economic component is what allows you to keep millage rates low. So we don't care if you fund it through some other mechanism, but we felt an obligation to recommend it, just like we did when we did the TIF agreement some time ago. So having said that, that's a little bit of why, that's a little bit of what. And I want to repeat what I said earlier, which is, this point in time, just like the point 23 years ago, before we got, 20 years ago before we started with a four-year degree, there will always be questions. What's the future going to hold? What's going to happen on the international stage? What's the U.S. education system going to look like? Those issues are real issues, but this is our university in this region. You are the dominant economic payer in this region. Jasper is catching up. This is an opportunity to build on the success that you started 20 years ago and continue for the next 20. This is a legacy investment, and if you choose to make it in whatever form you do, and we think you will, will change lives, change the economy, and change the lifestyle we've got here. 20 years from now, most of us, I'll be 76 next week, most of us, this is an institution that will go on forever. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Let's start with questions and comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to turn this back over to Dr. Cunningham.
Oh, we have a little bit more before we...
Yeah, well, plenty of questions. As I alluded, go here. of the University of South Carolina Beaufort, your commitment has empowered generations of students, enriched our community, and helped shape the future of higher education in the Low Country, with deepest appreciation from the faculty, staff, student, and alumni of the University of South Carolina.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like Councilman Passamit to step forward, because he has been involved with y'all for many years.
Very much.
Come on. Dr. Cunningham, take the... Thank you. So, yeah, are you all ready for questions and comments? Okay, I think I heard Ms. Brown first.
So you want to build an arena, right? And how much money are you asking from us?
The entire project's $120 million, we're asking 80.
Okay. All right, other comments?
If you could, if I could, 20 years ago, $38 million is probably about the same.
I just don't know where we're going to get that kind of money.
That's covered.
Okay, I think I heard Ms. Tavonet.
So do you have any funding coming from private sources or from the foundation? Or, I mean, right now, you're saying a two-to-one match with us, with the state. Where's other funding coming from?
Other funding will be coming from private sector and from other sources, just like we did in the first round. The reason the Hargray Building is named the Hargray Building is they gave $3 million. Helen Brantley gave a million and a half when we were building out their campus. Our family has done some stuff. We've funded a little over $500 million in scholarship in recent years. This is the amount we need for the capital construction process, the other things will be coming in. We will be having a naming opportunity, but operating these things for a period of time while they're ramping up is going to require private sector funding. So we have taken that into consideration with this ask, and it's appropriate. I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier.
That's okay. So for fiscal '26, the county approved 1.1 millage, and next year, we increase it to 1.3 for operating, correct, for the college?
They requested 1.3, and we gave 1.1.
Okay, so 1.1 mill we give you for operating, and with this transition to NCAA Division II membership, I assume you're going to have increased operational demands. If the arena is built, will you be coming back to us to ask us for increased millage for operations in the future?
No, just like we have not in the past for anything related to those kind of investments.
And has the transition to D2 already been completed?
We are... And we are confident we will, and so...
Can I respond to your question about the foundation as well? The USCB Education Foundation was operating as an accounting code in the USC Columbia Foundation until about two and a half years ago, when we bought our own software and moved away from that. We were developing those relationships. We have 7,000 alumni now, and the number is growing. We've just reached an endowment of a little over 2.2 million, which is enough to cover the operating expenses to run the systems and support the endowment. So it's growing nicely. One of the reasons we'd like to see the engagement of the community that this sort of facility brings is to increase the number of donations and the size of those donations into the foundation.
Knowing you, Mr. Stewart, I'm sure you have a business plan for this.
Yeah.
Okay, so what are the projected revenues and expenses annually? I know you have this.
Okay. Well, the correct, the question, you may be focusing on the arena, but let me give you the...
I am focusing on the arena.
What we anticipate, because we'll be issuing an RFP for a professional firm to manage the arena, and if they want to invest in building the hotels and the associated parking, we expect that to be a cash generator to the university as opposed to a cash cost. The athletic fields, such as track, baseball, and softball, currently those expenses are occurring and being put over, except for maintenance, those are being put over in Hardyville. Those will not be significant increases in the operating expenses for the university. And we've looked at what's happened elsewhere. I will tell you that, you may hear that Akin didn't do well there.
Yeah.
Let me tell you why. Two reasons. One is...
They didn't have you.
Well, I like to think of it as us, but 278 and the traffic moving up and down, it is somewhat different than the people going through Akin. And the folks moving here that are looking for cultural richness and opportunities are like, one of my friends who used to live in New Jersey said, she was used to things a little more sophisticated, and more like college basketball than what she experienced in the current environment. I won't name names, but you may know that person. So the other thing they did is they hired a firm to manage it, who was managing a bigger facility in nearby Augusta. And so they had somebody working, taking all the good facilities, good activities, over to Augusta. What we know here is that we have a lot of conferences that would come, that would talk about what we're doing here. We have hotel rooms that are empty many days during the week. We have seasons when we have emptiness on Hilton Head and other places. By bringing the kind of events here that can fill those hotels and restaurants during that period of time, it doesn't require more capital, it does provide more employment for the people that work in those places, and provides direct input into your budget as well as the municipalities, because of those activities that are going here. So net-net, we think it's going to be significantly positive for the counties and the cities from an operational standpoint.
Is there any hope to get more state money? I'm quite sure you'd leverage them.
Let me respond to that by saying that USC Columbia is busy with their own priorities, and they have never given a penny to USCB. We don't expect them to, but we'd be happy if they changed their mind. The state is a very competitive place to get money. Getting $40 million out of them for this project has been no minor thing. When we started, we thought the project was going to be significantly less expensive than ours, somewhere in the range of 65. So they have been generous, and they've done what they can do. They describe it as their final installment. Now, we're not asking you to write a check out of your general fund, we're not asking you to increase the millage, we're not asking you to do anything else. What we're asking you to do is look at 20 years of performance, and where a 30-year bond that was for $8 million for USCB and TCL was paid off in nine years. The same sort of thing can happen with an MCIP here, which is what we're expecting to see. Now Jasper, the state, and Beaufort County will all be in this before it's over, as well as the private sector folks. The previous time, it was Beaufort County Council, and Beaufort County Council alone, because the need was recognized and the opportunity was before us.
Back to you. Councilman Passamit?
Yes, now, I know some of the questions, the answers to the questions, but I'd like you to delve some more into the purpose of the arena, how it's going to be utilized in the future.
Yes, so the purpose of the arena, from the get-go, we called it a multipurpose facility, because aside from our growing athletic needs, that obviously we're going to be able to take advantage of the arena. Every year, we struggle when it's commencement time, and we've spoken with high schools in the area, and it's a similar challenge, and pray for being able to do it outside, but this past commencement, we had close to 3,000 just out there, and we couldn't possibly put them in any facility. to three thousand just out there, and we couldn't possibly put them in any facility. So, short of being able to do it outside, we don't have any other options. We've also, with that facility, been able to anticipate the needs that we have for conferences. We get lots of calls for people who want to be in this area and conduct conferences, and this facility would be able to do that. This facility was also, from the get-go and vision, is being able to help us with emergency responses in this area. It also facilitates the ability to do concerts, to do over-performances, trade shows, and things for which we have tremendously have had needs and demands. So, it's a multipurpose facility.
Yeah, that's, that's important to note. This is going to be a CAT-five building, which means it will be able to house individuals in case of an emergency during evacuations or hurricane. We do not have such a facility in Beaufort County.
Throughout the pandemic, we saw an incredible enhancement of the need for that, to have that. Whether it was food distributions, or vaccination, or any other mass activities that we conducted at the university, it would have been tremendously-
Okay. Oh, yes, Councilman Cullen.
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I'd like to thank you both for the opportunity for us to consider possible, and how college can help us. I believe we establish that education, cultural immersion, athletics. We both benefit the community and the vitality of the public, assist in regional development. Exciting to hear your vision happen here, and the important role that your organization and institution would play in the way the future develops. I hope that we will be able to be in a position to support you as best we can, and as you have requested, as we go forward, because a great many people here on the council have a background in education. I know Joe does, and I know that Tab does, and when I started working as a teacher in New York City, I only quit because they told me the DEA would be less dangerous if I went there to work. At any rate, it's a, it's something I think that we all believe in and would like to find a way to help, and I will certainly do my best to do that. So, thank you very much for what you've done here today.
Anyone who hasn't asked, yes, Mark.
I don't have a question. Both my wife and my daughter both graduated from USCB, so understand exactly how important this is to the community, and just said, I mean, if there's a way for us to do it, we'd love to find that way. It is a big ask. I can remember, this first came up years ago, and it was probably one-third or one-fourth of, of the money that we are now, but we know how costs have, have, have gone up. So, my support, it's just trying to figure out a way that, that we can, we can do this and not be on the backs of Beaufort County citizens, but again, it's going to benefit us, you know, immensely.
Okay, Councilman Cunningham.
Thank you. The only question I did have, then I have a comment, I guess, you pretty much already answered. So, this will be open for venues of concerts or trade shows to utilize the space, so it's used year-round and not just for college sporting events.
Correct.
We expect to have the South Carolina Bar Association and other group of those suspicious attorney-type people coming down here and doing things as well.
That's fair enough, as long as it gets used.
They do.
The only thing I would want to add is sort of a little piggyback off Mr. McKellen a little bit. I did graduate from USCB. Still have a lot of friends that are here in the community that graduated from USCB. Pretty sure the firefighter of the year actually graduated from USCB with you guys. Only one that knew me when I was that young was Mr. McKellen, and he actually wrote me a letter to get a scholarship so I could go to USCB.
Oh.
I don't know if you remember that or not, a long time ago.
Hundred years ago.
He might regret it now, sitting next to me.
More than two weeks ago, it was.
So, with that said, though, most people back then never in a million years would have saw me here, or getting into teaching, or anything that I'm doing now. They probably would have seen me, all honesty, in jail ten years ago.
Oh.
So, that's, you know, it's brutally honest. There's a lot of things that I learned inside USCB. I always tell people, they're like, "Well, you don't even use your degree." I might not use my degree itself, but there are strategies and things that I learned in college that I definitely use in my business practice or here. And one of them is, you know, figuring out how to make this happen, figuring out how to make the money work. Just because I graduated from there doesn't mean I would say yes to you guys. That's something you guys taught me. So, with that said, I do love the idea. I've been on board with the arena for a long time. Mr. Passment will tell you. I came to him when I first got on county council, saying, "If USCB is not going to do it, we need to figure out how to do it as a county." I talked to Jared about this, too, a long time ago, when we talked about facilities. Is there a way we can have our own arena if USCB is not going to do it? The end market holds ninety-five hundred people. The economic driver on that end-market arena is insane. I know this is about half that size, but even still, we're a smaller area than Savannah, and that draws people from all the way down from Florida and North Carolina, and up the coast for these concerts and events. So, again, like Mark said, not sure exactly how we get there. The brains of that operation, she's sitting right over there at that table. She'd be the one to be able to figure that out. That's above every single one of our pay grades. But if there is a way to do this without raising the millage, like you said, just like we told the school board, the school board is able to do it years and years and years, increase the salaries, and then finally, at this point, we increase the millage when they reach their threshold, I have no problem with that. I'd support it if we figure out how to get that done.
I'm going to go back to Count Vice Chair, I think she had, unless there's somebody else.
Councilman Glover.
It's quickly, yeah, I, I'm looking forward to the administration coming back with some recommendation, how we move this forward. This, this, want to make a quick comment. Soccer is big, but there's something here, and I, I visit Florida recently, and there was a big conference, I mean, a big event down there in Florida. Soccer is big.
It is.
Baseball is, I'm not going to say is going out, but I don't know, when you compare the two nationally, internationally, soccer is big.
And absolutely, and so, thank you for, for doing that. Just let me also point out that, that this evening, we have a, a public forum to just be able to talk and, and discuss all of the, the things related to the facility, the athletics, and, and also about USCB and its impact, and the economic impact that, that it has. But with regard to your question, we've sought a comprehensive plan. Thankfully, we already had soccer field on, on, on campus, but this, this will play very well into that, because we know how critical that is as well.
While we have- Mr. Cunningham, our athletic director.
Thank you for having us. Yeah, we're excited about this, and excited with the opportunity to present to you. We do have a soccer field on campus currently. We call it Finland, which, which goes well with our sand shark theme. So, Finland is a nice home for our women's soccer team. However, this facility would give us the opportunity, possibly with synthetic turf, and as we know, that is kind of the future of, of facilities and fields. So, that's the opportunity to play either at Finland, or move up to this facility and upgrade our, our park.
Okay, is that an answer? Thanks. Councilman Brown?
I just have one quick question. Have you all reached out? I come from the financial services industry. Have you reached out to like Chase Capital One, or even Parker's Gas Station, because they have the end market, as Mr. Cunningham was talking about over in Savannah? Have you reached out to them to get, to get them to sponsor this, so the taxpayer is not on the hook?
Let me respond to both parts of that, if I might. As a taxpayer, I don't anticipate being on the hook. I anticipate this generating more than it costs, but I understand where you're coming from, because we all look at it from our standpoint. The second piece is just as the Hargray Building is named, and just as the Heritage Conference Room that we'll be meeting in this afternoon for this session is named for the Heritage Golf Tournament, there will be multiple opportunities for Chase, who's entering this market, for Mellon, who's here with their CR, and for any number of other organizations, and be happy to get a list of contacts, if you can give us some, to name the arena, and to name the stadium, and to name the men's room, and to just do whatever they need to do, let them be an economic supporter. That will not change the conditions necessary to make this happen, just like the Hargray was three-million dollars of wiring and stuff for that building. So, all of that's built into the plan, but it's not part of what we're asking for.
We truly look at this as an investment, and the payoff in terms of economic impact is going to be tremendous. In the early days, when we first approached county about this, we had a, an economic impact done. We, we think it's, it's now probably tripled.
Okay, all right. I haven't heard from Councilman Reese.
I'll be very quick. First of all, congratulations on the twenty years. That is just phenomenal. More importantly, thanks for the passion you bring here today. I, I look at TCL, I look at USCB, and something after lunch with our Dr. Rodriguez in the school. This Beaufort County is lucky to have the group of people here, and I'm honored to be on this committee, or this council, to help support you and all, and all of you, so thank you for that.
Okay, Councilman Passment.
Yes, one, one final comment from me. Two-seventy-eight is that road that blocks the students from being able to go across to what can be their home turf for events after taking opportunities on the campus to go shopping. So, the MCIP will generate a lot of money in growth once this comes to fruition, and we have those two bridges to get people across two-seventy-eight. So, that's the good economic impact. That becomes their downtown.
You're exactly right, but that will be paid for by Jasper County participation in the MCIP, and it's not a condition of what we're looking for here. We expect that to come to pass as our current MCIP matures and during the construction process of these, but that's exactly right. And lest I forget it, I just want to say one thing before I leave the podium. Building what, Councilman Cunningham said, in my personal experiences as a child here, I will tell you that you will hear from people who have strong opinions in the time to come talk to you, and the education and confidence to do that. You will hear from people who have particular agendas, because they're here now and they don't want to see any change. You will hear from a number of other people who have expertise because they want to share it with somebody, and I'm certainly one of those here today. What you won't hear from is those poor people that need an opportunity to achieve a better future here locally, many of whom are bright, many of whom are capable, many of whom are committed, but do not have the resources. There is no one here to speak for them, except you, and you are the folks we're asking you to take that into consideration. I'm excited about concerts. I'm excited about the championship Quinn and his athletic program is going to bring here. I'm excited about the research they're doing on Pritchard Island and other places. But at the end of the day, that constituency and changing those lives and that economics is very important, and you are the people that we have elected to represent those folks who are not going to show up here and are not going to say anything.
Councilman Dawson had a comment, question?
Yeah, Dr. Pennew and Dick, I thank you all for the presentation. Dr. Pennew, I thank you for the great work you're doing at the college. The presentation gives us a view of your insight for the growth of the college as well as the region, and I, I think it's just something, it's a project worthwhile, us looking into and furthering our discussion. So, I'm, I'm on board. I'm, I'm looking forward to trying to make this work.
I had a few in-the-weeds kind of questions. How much of this proposed area, if you know, percentage-wise, is in Jasper County, and how much is in Beaufort County?
Of the campus of the university?
No, of the entire, of the new, new area, just the new, yeah.
Or are you talking about the, just where will-
Where you want to develop this?
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay. Okay. And the, and the two, the hotels would be in Jasper County?
One in Jasper, one in Beaufort, and a bridge in Jasper, and a bridge in Beaufort. But Jasper's expected to pay for the bridges and for part of the park.
When the fields and the arena are built, will the construction be overseen by the state?
We would like to spend some time talking with you.
Okay.
This is Stewart, this is Stewart. I think we want to speak on the microphone.
We need your microphone, I think, so the public can hear.
Yeah. We have heard stories from other folks who've experienced significant cost increases and delays by using a program that's focused in Columbia. So, we'd like to work with Beaufort County, as has been done in the past, to do the most efficient way possible to get these dollars deployed. So, I think the answer to your question is, we have confidence in the system that has proven itself twenty years ago, and we think everyone else will too, including the state.
I remember hearing when the Culinary Institute was built, and the state oversaw that construction, because I was liaison to TCL at that time, so that's why I brought that up. Is David Bartholomew still on? I don't think so. I don't think he's on. I just wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to-
He's off, okay.
He's off, so if he had any questions. So, that, that was one of my big questions about, and I think the financing is a, is a big comment of mine, of how we get there, and I think you'll hear some comments when we open it up for public comment, too, regarding the financing. Last chance, anyone last, yes, Councilman?
The only I've got is, is, I might have missed it in the presentation, is in a perfect world, if everything fell together with the financing and everything else happened, what's our schedule? What's our timeline? What's our, in a perfect world, that-
Okay, I, I aspire to that world, and I appreciate the disclaimer that goes with it. We think we have the wetland permits, so the athletic fields can begin sooner. We would expect those to start within twelve months, be finished with about thirty months. The actual building itself for the arena will take somewhat longer to design. You've got architectural issues, you've got engineering and the rest of that, so that's about an eighteen-month project all in. So, we think that probably starts about two years from now and finishes about two years after that. So, that's how long that completes. The bridges themselves will require some definition and some associated concern to Jasper County about where they're going to land, and the question of whether it's cars, or golf carts and bicycling pedestrian only is a bit open. But because the South Carolina DOT is involved, it will have to be significantly different, perfect world than one I have experienced, but I think those will probably get started during the construction period of the arena.
How you think would be critical for us?
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Just on finance, how much, how much built-in cost overrun are you projecting in these figures? Because one of the problems, we, we, you know, when you make a commitment to a project, then you assume all the projected cost increase that comes with that as well, because once you into it, you can't really turn around.
Well, as you'll see, if you are able to come to the public session tonight, the architecture firm we're using on this is LS-3P out of Savannah. They've designed arenas and built them in the last couple of years in Statesboro and a number of other places for universities of similar size and capacity. So, they have given us cost estimates based on what we think it's going to be if we get funding to start activities later this year. We don't know about tariffs and the rest of that stuff, so we put about an eight-to-ten percent contingency in this, and we also have mechanisms by which we'll be looking for some of those private naming opportunities and other things to augment that. We think that's a conservative.
Okay, thank you.
But it also brings to the importance of the urgency, because with time, we've seen this, the increase of just-
The forty million is, have an expiration date from the state?
No, they don't, but it can get complicated, but let's-
Dr. Pennew, very appropriately, my view has been, if you get forty million sent around the state and you're not doing anything with it, you're at great risk.
Absolutely.
All right, without any further questions, well, thank you, and we're going to open it up for public comment. We had one person sign up. Is anyone else you want to speak to? Okay, are you, are you deferring to him, or you both want to speak? Okay.
Anyone from the school boards, welcome to come in and speak.
Any of you are welcome. That's why we did, yeah. That's why we did, yeah. You'll just state your name for the record.
My name's Dick Guyer. I am a board member of the Beaufort County School Board, and I'd like to talk about the MCIP that is proposed. We reviewed this brochure last Friday. Actually, we had it in the district for more, but we didn't hear that it was going to be brought up until this week. We reviewed it, and what we found and concerned us was some of the information in this brochure, and I'm going to quote this. Quote, "The project will be funded by both state and counties. The funding mechanism will define a region where property tax payments are converted to fees. This approach does not increase tax payments, it changes how the revenue from a specific area is allocated. The amount property owners pay remains the same, but a portion of the revenue is directed to fund this project. Approval from both Beaufort and Jasper Counties is required." And here's a statement that got our attention. "But this process does not necessitate a public referendum or school district opt-in. It does not affect the county's ability to fund other projects," unquote. This content caused us to consult with our bond counsel, Attorney Franny Heiser, to understand how this project would affect the Beaufort County School District. She came in, this was on Friday when we looked at this. On Tuesday at our board meeting, we asked her to come in and advise us in executive session. She explained that she believes this will be a multi-county industrial business park, MCIP, and she has experience with this type of project in South Carolina. Specific details of how the MCIP agreement can vary between counties, including how revenues and expenses are shared. It seemed obvious that the project construction funds would be required upfront and before fees can be collected from customers or businesses using the project's amenities. Specific details of how much money the district would have to provide and when it would have to be assessed would have to be included in this agreement. A quick dive into the history of MCIPs in South Carolina, because when I was writing this up, I couldn't remember what the MCIP stood for, so I Googled MCIP South Carolina, and I saw there's some issues. That Google search discovered concerns of how these programs negatively affected school districts. For example, Beaufort County Public Schools lost $84 million in fiscal year 2019 because of massive property tax breaks given in an MCIP. Other reports found that MCIPs had a history of a lack of transparency and poor subsidy oversight. This raised alarms to the board. We also discussed how this project would benefit the district. The only likely use the district would have would be conducting one or more of the six annual, three-hour high school graduation ceremonies once a year. In my seven years on the school board, only two graduations have been adversely affected by weather, and some principals do not want to travel all that way for graduations. So the district could not guarantee that there would be six graduation ceremonies in the May of every year. The discussion with Attorney Heiser occurred in executive session. In subsequent open session, the following motion was made. "I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education not support the use of any school operations or debt service funds for the construction of any non-district facilities." That motion passed overwhelmingly with no no votes and one abstention. The brochure states that the referendum is not necessary. However, public referendum is how the Beaufort County School District raised the money for constructions of projects totaling over $800 million by gaining the public's trust and bringing these construction projects in on time and on budget. So why can't we do the same with the citizens of two counties that could vote on this under referendum?
Thank you for your comments, Chairman. Is there anyone else that has public comment at this time? Sure. If you'll just say your name for the record.
Hi. My name is Ingrid Boatright. I am the District 11 Representative on the Beaufort County School Board, and I just have to say y'all, the coldest winter I've ever spent is summer in the Bluffton County Library. Y'all are freezing us out here. I am also going to echo what my colleague said. I am, first of all, I want to thank you, the county council, because you guys have been really collaborative with us on the school board, and you've really enabled us to do a lot of things that we've done, and really appreciate the partnership that you guys show with us. I am also a taxpayer, not the largest, not the smallest, and as a taxpayer, I want you guys investing in infrastructure and capital projects. I am leaving this meeting, I'm going to USCB where the strategic partner or the developer for OpenAI is going to be speaking, so I value USCB. So I trust you guys to make decisions about the capital projects you want to invest in. The problem we have here is how we're going to fund it, $80 million. The MCIP is a problem for the Beaufort County School Board because it allows you guys to essentially take the revenue that comes from the fee lot, the fee in lieu of taxes, and direct all of it to this project instead of directing the school board's share and taking the county's share. This was a constitutional amendment that was put in 1988, this MCIP, and when they did it, concern was raised about how it would affect taxing entities such as school districts. And the state went to great lengths to say, no, no, this will not affect school district monies. In fact, there was actually an article written in October of 1988 where Ed Burgess, who at the time was in charge of this, said, no, the taxing entities will get their share and that will be arranged by contract. Over the years, that has changed, and recently, school districts have been seeking relief from the courts and from the Attorney General to say, we're losing a lot of funding through these MCIP arrangements, and there really is no legal way to get relief for that for the school district. So what I'll say is, what they're proposing is completely legal. I understand why they are looking to raise this money, but it will directly impact substantially the money that the school district has. And I think when you look at what happened in November here in Beaufort County, we had gone 12 years without passing a referendum, and we've now passed two of the largest referendums in history, and fortunately, we are rebuilding our schools and investing in school infrastructures. The county unfortunately was not able to pass its referendum, and as a taxpayer, I want you guys to have that money. I live on Hilton Head, we want a bridge, we want good roads, we want all this infrastructure. But I think there's some work that has to be done with the county council, and you guys are well on your way, and it sounds like things are going very smoothly, to restore that trust with voters so that we can get these referendums passed. We're a fast-growing county, and we need this money. But what that referendum told me in November is that Beaufort County voters value K-12 education, they trust our superintendent and our board in terms of handling that money, and the county council needs to do that work. I think taking this opportunity to bypass that process and not doing a referendum and a general bond obligation will harm the path we're on to restore that trust with voters. So I'm here to represent, not that we shouldn't do this project, but we shouldn't use school district money as part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up? Yes, for public comment. State your name for the record.
Jessie White with the Coastal Conservation League. I just wanted to briefly speak to the information that was passed out at the chat with council on Tuesday at the St. Helena Library. I didn't see what was passed out, but I'm assuming it's the Protect St. Helena information that was a flyer, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of context that Protect St. Helena is a coalition of organizations and institutions, including the Conservation League and the Penn Center, and individuals that live on St. Helena Island or are residents of St. Helena Island or landowners, and all of the information in there is factual. The addresses were pulled directly from the county website under each council page. The information is listed, and so that was provided in order to ensure that people who want to reach out to council members have your contact information. And so I just wanted to provide that context since it was brought up earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we're going to break now, or we're going to keep going for the workshop? Break for lunch? Okay. Anyone is welcome to say for the rest of the workshop. There's one subject left, but we are going to take a break. How long is the break?
Break for lunch?
Yeah, break for lunch. How, Mr. Moore, how long you want everybody, if they're coming back, to come back?
20 minutes.
A little bit too, that's too long.
12:15.
12:15? Good? With everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. 12:15. All right. Thank you. We are temporarily taking a break for lunch. We'll convene at 12:15. Thank you for those of you attending. Yeah. Yeah. Bring it in.[1305.48]
...to see me, 'cause I don't think they'd understand. When everything's made to be broken, I just want you to know who I am.
Everybody here? You got, oh, you gotta turn us on. We're ready to start back. Mr. Fralics?
Yes.
Are you ready? Do you want us to let you brief it and not interrupt with questions or interrupt with questions?
Welcome interruptions.
You welcome interruptions?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome to questions. That's right. Let me back up. They're not interruptions. They're welcome to questions.
And just in case no one saw it, I did. Mr. Fralics did a great job on WTOC this week briefing the bridge project. Very good publicity for Beaufort County.
It was a good, good week, for sure. And we're gonna pull up this presentation. So there's one single goal today for us to talk about and decide. And that goal is to discuss these updated projects. We want to talk about our 2018 sales tax. And we want to, at the end of the day, out of this discussion, have a plan which will codify at upcoming council meeting with an appropriate document that we, that staff can execute, we can complete the projects and bring finality to the 2018 sales tax program. That is the overall arching goal of the day. There's three discussion points I want us to talk about. First is remember what we talked about in March. So March, we came to you guys and said, okay, we've got, we were unsuccessful in November. We've got more projects than we have funding. We need to figure out a path to right-size the projects to the, to the amount of funding that we have. So I want us to talk about that. Secondly, I want us, I want to explain what we've done since March over the last three months, what staff has looked at. There's basically three things. There's, we've, in March, we gave some proposed projects and scopes, but they are estimated values. So we've refined those scopes and refined the project costs on all of the projects, the refined projects and all of the pathway projects. So we have really good data and cost numbers, better than we've had throughout the life of the program, just because of the history that we have and historical values, cost values that we have now. We also met with Shell Point Neighborhood. That was one of the pathways that we said we wanted some more feedback. So we met with them, had good discussions with those, with that neighborhood. And then we also had a constituent approach us about Salem Road's pathway. And so staff has done some background information on that and prepared information for you all to see. There was four, and then lastly, the third thing I want us to discuss is just the, the project, to talk through the proposed solutions and kind of package these projects and bring it forward to upcoming council. There was four documents in the agenda. We're gonna spend our time on the presentation, but just so you know what's there. There's this presentation. Some of it, you may have questions if you're looking at yourself, and I'm gonna explain some of the numbers and what the numbers are and how we got there. There was a proposed resolution. That is the goal. So we put together our draft of that, but our goal is come July 14th, I think, is the council meeting, that we would take the, the voices heard today, consolidate that and take that resolution, and that's what gets voted on to finalize the project list. And then there was a project description that was very thorough, had project costs, it had project scopes. And then lastly, there was a, like I said, on Salem Road, we had a deep dive on that, on the pros and cons of whether we keep it on one side of the road or the other. So with that, is this, no, that's not gonna control. All right. This? Only got one battery.
Got dropped. Yeah, it got dropped. Yeah, it got dropped. In public comment.
I'm the problem. All right, we got it. All right, so part of this, we didn't change a lot from our last presentation in March because I wanted to show you what we talked about and then where we are now. So this was information on three or four slides. I've consolidated to this one slide so we can get through it. Originally, we had $120 million. That was our sales tax. The revised funding there is we had over collection, so we actually collected $146.5 million in the program. Previously, we council had already allocated. Previously, we, council had already allocated 15.5 out of that over collection to the pathways. And then also, we have $5 million in grants that we've already obtained for pathways. So that's why that one number is different at 30.5 for pathways. Does that make sense? All right. The next one, we've, we just revised with accurate numbers, latest to date. So the amount spent and then subsequently the amount remaining. We're not gonna focus on 278. Everybody's aware where that is. That project's moving forward. We had the good news earlier this week. So we're really gonna focus on Ladies Island Corridor and the pathway. So at the very right column, you see Ladies Island has 23.3. Or actually, if you drop down, Ladies Island has 23.3, and then the pathways has 21.74. As I mentioned, we had the over collection. So $120 million was the program. We collected 146.5. We've already allocated 15.5, so there's 11 million that has never been allocated. So when you add all those up, the 23.3, the 21.74, and 11, there's 56.07 million dollars for us to expend on the new project list. Any questions? All right, good. So this is what we started with in March. Staff said, okay, we know that it's gonna take 70 million by itself just to do all the projects on Ladies Island. We're not gonna be able to do that. What do we think? The heart of the projects, all the, the, the main projects that we can achieve with some difference amount of funding? And so the Hart Project, that's the intersection at 802 and 21. These are updated numbers. So the numbers that we provided in March were guesstimates. We were coming up with new scopes, but we hadn't priced those out yet. So these are refined scopes based off what we said and then refined costs. So we are very confident in these costs. So the Hart Project, that's the intersection. The next one is widening, still on 21, right in front of Walmart. So about 4,000 feet of widening. It's, it goes from four lanes to two lanes through that section. It's $9 million, 9.16. Ladies Island Middle School, which is the new route from Gay Drive at 21 up to the middle school, it removes the existing Cougar access and then installs the sidewalk along Robin up to Sands Point Way. That total cost is 9.06 million. The scaled-down Hazel Farm-Gay, so Hazel Farm is dirt road, making that paved. There's an intersection that needs some improvements, so making that the roundabout. Adding the signal at 21 and Gay Drive, which aligns with Ladies Island Middle School. And then we're gonna design the pedestrian accommodations, but we're going to not install those at this time in this project. That cost there, 7.69. Scaled-down Sunset-Miller Drive. So this is, instead of the roundabout at that intersection, this is a scaled-down version. This is the T-intersection with a raised crosswalk, some traffic calming on Miller, and then resurface both roads, 1.83. And lastly, Airport-French Road Phase Two. So we've already constructed the first portion. This would be continuing behind Taco Bell. And what we said is to scale it down. We're just gonna, we've already done a lot of the design. We're gonna continue the design, do the permitting and right-of-way acquisition and the mitigation. And so those total 760,000.
Just because David's not on, remind, I'd like to remind the council that the Sunset Drive and Miller Road, we had a, a large number of people show up for our council meetings that said they did not want the roundabout.
Yes. So they, they did say they did not want the roundabout. At one time, they said they don't want any of the projects, give the money back. We've, staff has had a lot of communication with the neighborhood. They do want safety and slow speeds. And so this is a proposed, what we have, the 1.83 in this scope, is something that is comfortable with the neighborhood, that we've got their permission, is comfortable with DOT, and we think it kinda threads the needle for those improvements.
You taking question, go ahead.
Let me, let me finish real quick and then I'll take a question. So when you add all that together, the first page and the second page on Ladies Island, you get 32.8 million dollars. That is more than the 23.3 million dollars. So what we're saying here, we would grab some of that 11 million dollars to fund. Our goal was to find the right projects that make sense and build those, rather than take a project and peel off the layers of the onion, and then you're left with a project that doesn't necessarily make sense, but it fit in your budget. So this was our draft, and it'll line up with the pathway discussion in just a second. But that's a good point. So yes, sir, Mr. Dawson.
I'm just curious, what, what does dirt road improvement entail? What all, I mean?
Paving it. Yes, sir. Just this one road. This is, Hazel Farm right now is a county dirt road.
Took that, trying to improve the dirt road, but this is paving the road. That was my concern.
Y'all work for York, I think.
Yeah. Go back up to widening US 21 from Lost Island to Walmart entrance. You have a layout of that? How, how's that gonna look? Cause if you're bringing in full lanes currently, right now, it's bottlenecked.
Yes.
Yeah, there's only one lane coming into Walmart. You're gonna put two lanes there, but.
So we would keep that median a little bit. It'd probably get reduced a little bit to the inside. And so a little bit of widening to the inside and widening to the outside. So as you're coming from Beaufort towards St. Helena, you've got four lanes on the causeway, and then it starts pinching down as you get to the intersection. You would continue to have that same four-lane feeling all the way through the intersection. Once you get past the second driveway at Walmart, the last Walmart entrance, then it would neck back down to the, it's a three-lane section until you get past Chow and Creek.
Can you go, can you extend it a little further? Just allow that traffic to kinda?
So, yeah.
Merge back together? Cause it's gonna bottleneck there.
It's gonna bottleneck at some point.
At some point.
So it's just whether, so what we were trying to get it is to move the bottleneck beyond the commercial district. So once it gets past Walmart, that was our reasoning for drawing it back. I mean, we can extend it all the way to Chow and Creek, but that may eat up all your, all your money.
Don't do that, no. But I would go up to the, pretty close to the airport circle consideration. I mean.
We, we can look at that. I don't have a cost threat now, but there would be some extra costs in that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. I think all in all, it's about 4,000 feet is what we have from Lost Island to pass Walmart as that section.
I'm just, I'm just trying to deal with that bottleneck is gonna happen. The question is where? Yeah.
So you won't have as much backup once we get past the Walmart in the commercial section, which Jared was talking about, so.
Yeah, I drive it every day. I don't necessarily see that many, many traffic, much traffic going into Walmart.
Part of the bottleneck.
Yes, I am.
We hear you, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Tom, I, I wanna bring you back to the first slide, but do you wanna wait till the end of that?
No.
Tour, just, no, the corridor one. Back, yeah, right there. Jared, I, I know you've probably touched upon it, but with the bridge moving forward like we've heard and went through, you had 80 million assigned for the corridor. Now that that shifted to the bridge, what are we gonna do with throughout 2018 projects here to maybe compensate for that money just being used on the bridge now?
Yeah, so this is just the sales tax money. We have some impact fee funding and then obviously state fund. All of our project money are 101 million dollars, along with the 120 from the CIB and the 90 from the state are simply for the three-lane bridge.
Yes, sir.
And it ends. So if we want to do anything beyond that, we could, we have 11 million dollars that's unobligated inside sales tax, and that's the only unobligated funds that could go somewhere.
For Hilton Head and that whole 12 miles, you gotta look at that because that 80 million was gonna be dispersed throughout that before this new plan for the bridge, right? So again, we gotta keep a good eye on that.
Well, I think a good eye isn't about. In about five minutes after we go through all this, this is the place for that discussion. And our goal is come July 14th, that that is a settled issue. So that this council has the discussions today, whether you wanna take some of that 11 and put it on the remainder of US 278, whether you wanna put it on Ladies Island, or whether you wanna put it on the pathways. And then we codify that in July, and that way staff has an executable plan that we can go and deliver.
Good man. I just wanna make sure that I'm articulate enough to make sure that, that 80 million was for the corridor. It, it was a lot. It was not for the bridge. It was, if you go back in time, you go through all those numbers and iterations. I, I just wanna make sure we get some help with that.
Okay, let's go on.
Okay.
I think Mr. Moore wanted to speak.
I was just gonna say, council committed the 80 million through that resolution. So that money for the corridor went to the bridge project.
That's gone, correct.
Right.
Thank you. That's what I'm saying.
Councilman McAllen, did you have a comment?
I just have, talking about the money being committed to the bridge, will that bridge work extend on the roadways to Jenkins Island Road, which is the beginning of the municipality, and also include that parallel track that's going around Charlotte-Henrich Circle? So it's not just the bridge stopping once you cross the waterway. That highway system there in front of Windmill Harbor to Jenkins Island Road will be part of that plan, yes?
Yeah, so it won't go to Jenkins Island, but it'll go to Windmill Harbor to the intersection. So as you come off the bridge, the asphalt will be the full width of the bridge and will narrow down, and the road improvements will stop at the intersection. The parallel road will go from C-100 Circle and go back to Hog Island. That will be, all that's included in the 80 million in the bridge as it's.
What about that road that's supposed to go to Jenkins Island Road so that the entrance and exit of?
Yeah, so that is not in the current plan to just do the bridge. So right now, the Jenkins Island would remain. If we wanted to make that improvement, that would be additional cost beyond what is codified in that bridge project.
People who live on, on Blue Heron and in Marinus Cove will be able to go under the bridge and come up that little extension around that traffic circle and out at the traffic light.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
Go ahead.
All right, so that's Ladies Island. Now, and this is in a different format, same information of this right here, but just in a spreadsheet format, and I know it's small. Anyhow, it, it goes through, says we've expended 2.3 million dollars out of the original 30, and those projects and the scopes I just described, they total 32.8 million dollars, which is the same number I said right here.
Really? Is Miller Drive, David Bartholomew sent a email.
That's on the pathway. Yep.
Got it.
All right. So that is Ladies Island. I'm gonna shift gears to the pathways unless we need to. And I can get through all this information and we can continue this conversation. The goal is for us to have the conversations because at the end of the day, we want to put a vote on.
Let me ask a quick question about Miller Drive.
Yes, sir.
On Miller Drive and Sands Point Road, there was a talk about a traffic light being there. Is that still in the consideration?
It's, it's planned. That's where it would go if there is a signal warrant. But in the plans that we're presenting here in the scope, there is no signal installed because presently it does not meet the warrant.
Okay. And the only comment I'm, I wanna make really is that I think it warrants a signal light at Short Landing Road versus Miller Road. Leave that like that, but.
Yes, so I think, are we doing it? Are we looking at? So we, we have done some study up along Sands Point, and it does sound like there is some warrants at Shorts. So that is not part of the sales tax.
Right.
But it may be something we can look at other funding, impact fee, or, or some other source of funding.
But if you were gonna put one at Miller Road, and you're not gonna do it, just put on some.
Well, and we could, just, just not with this bucket of money because of the termini is up to Miller Road, and so we can't go beyond the termini.
Okay.
But with that information, we can talk further as far as a future project there. All right. Pathways. So pathways, there was 24 pathways. What we did as staff before the March meeting was just to say, okay, we're gonna kinda put them in what we call priority order. It was just based off ready to go to construction or level of design or interest that we have. So beyond that, there was, that was just a nomenclature that we made up, the priorities. So these were the, there was five different priorities that we established. This was the first group, the second group, the third group. And in the discussion in March, we said the money that we had, we thought we could make it all the way through the, the top three priorities. And then the last priority four and priority five, we would run out of funding before we get to those. So with the updated scopes and the updated costs, this is where we are, this next slide. So the money did not quite stretch as far as we anticipated. So back to the beginning spreadsheet, we, out of the 30.5 that we had for sales tax for pathways, we have 21.74 remaining. And so when you look at these, this gets us Broad River Boulevard was the end of Phase Two. Middle Road, I believe, was the first one in Priority Three. And so it gets us just into the top of that. And that's a little bit beyond the 21.74. And, and I know there'll probably be some questions, but let me go to the next slide and, and answer one or two more things. So when you look at what we had, the top is available that I talked about at the beginning. Well, the difference between what we had and what we spent is the 23.33, the 21.74, and 11 million unobligated, that gets us 56.07. The full scopes that I described already for Ladies Island, and then the pathways that I just showed and highlighted in yellow, when you add those two together, it gets us just shy of 56 million dollars. So this is, in essence, a balanced budget, a balanced recommendation of projects and scopes that could be completed with the funding that we have left available. And I think that is the last, yeah, so that's, that's it. And now it's really discussion. And what we have on these, this is a spreadsheet. Brian has control of the spreadsheet. If there's discussion around this and we want to move money around, whether it's to 278 or to a different pathway or to something else on Ladies Island, we have the opportunities and the tools to do that live, and we can adjust money. In the resolution that we have as part of the backup material, can we go to that real quick, the resolution? So the resolution, the whereas is just kinda the history of how we got to where we are. The next slide, next page, just starts listing out these road projects. So it lists out all the Ladies Island ones that we just talked about, and it goes through the pathways, the next page, and it goes all the way to Middle Road. So this is what we would take to county council. It doesn't have to, since we're at workshop, it can go straight to council. We would take in July for you guys to vote on and hopefully approve whatever this list is, whether we need to modify it or not.
Pretty force.
Yes, so that is, that is all of my talking.
Let's start at this end. Any comment? Councilman Dawson? Start down, Tom. Councilman Glover?
Just quickly, Dave Bartholomew was talking about Middle Road.
Yes. Yes, so.
Taking it off. Are we considering that at this time or?
I, I want you guys to consider that at this time. So I'll show you what, I'll get back to that screen in just a second. So on the pathways, right here. So we showed that the money, Middle Road was just the one that we had listed as the top in Priority Three. They're all the same to us. It doesn't have any difference. And the end of Priority Three was Broad River Drive. Priority Four started Meridian Road and below. So staff, it doesn't matter to us. What, we've had at least one comment come in. Somebody recently had said they didn't want Middle Road. We had a public meeting of, there was, there was positive, positive feedback about wanting Middle Road. And so we left it. And then if, if the desire is to be switched, we'd rather all 11 of you tell us that than just react to Councilman Bartholomew. So.
When I look at Middle Road, I.
I said, middle, I'm sorry. I thought I said Miller, middle.
When I look at Middle Road and I saw segmented, Middle Road was not connected, I was wondering in my mind, why are we doing this? Because it is not a, a continuous pathway, but it's segmented in three segments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, this cost that's in this, this is for the full length is what's represented, is 3 million dollars there. So.
Okay.
If we wanted to segment it, we can, we have those costs.
No, no, no.
If we wanted to leave it as whole, we have the whole cost represented here.
Okay, and it's all on one side or is it shifting from one side to the other?
It's one side.
Anyone else, Councilman?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
I have a question.
I'm fine.
I'm putting my district hat on, not my chairman's hat. But, you know, we met with the public on Broad River Drive and that's just, that's just half of it, correct?
Yeah, so this is-
It didn't make the cut.
It didn't make the cut, but what's represented, the whole cost was $4 million. And what's represented there is the western half that was desired by the public.
So if anyone decides, like Middle Road, yeah, that would be great because it does go to a school and a park, even doing half of it. And Salem Road, we kept the original design?
Yeah, so on Salem, thank you for pointing this out. So on Salem, in the backup material, we looked at, like I said, we had some feedback about it being on one side versus others. So staff looked at it and made a presentation of that. In short, we're on the eastern side of the, we're on the marsh side of the road. And, and we're 65% designed and we have a project cost of 2.6 million dollars when you add those together. On the other side, to move it to the other side of the road, we have some utility and some wetland mitigation costs. And the total project is 3 point something, 3-
A million dollars more?
In total, it's, I'll get the cost in just a second. It's about 3.5 million dollars versus the 2.6 million dollars. 3.9 million versus 2.6.
Okay.
And we haven't started any design. So in order to complete the design that we have, it was about two years to complete the changed directions on the different side. We'd be fully complete in four years.
Oh, alright. Any other questions about?
I have a question on Alljoy because two of our council members brought up Alljoy. Is this, I can't read that one, but is this for their pathway?
Yeah, so this is the pathway that is designed and bid that will be coming to council in August. So if you want to change that, this is-
So if they, well, their, their conversation was to change it to pervious. How does that change the-
So it would go up. We don't have, I don't know that we have a cost on the difference between impervious that we have bid today and pervious. We'd need to put that back out to bid. We'd have to redesign a little bit, put it back out to bid. I would assume it's a couple hundred thousand dollars based off the length of the road and the difference. We would then have to maintain it long-term. Right now, the proposal is it's back in DOT's maintenance. And then one thing also to note is we have grant funding on this project with DOT TAP funding. So we've got the red, the green light now to move forward with that. And we had two bids. We had a bid at 2.5 million dollars, which was around our engineer's estimate. And the second bid was 3.5 million dollars. So if we put it out to bid, we also have to talk with DOT, our grantor. And then depending on what kind of bids we get back.
That would push it, push the next one down out.
It would, it would put pressure on the next one.
Yeah, the one on the bottom.
I mean, like I said, right now, it's even if you add something, then, and if that's changed, we know there will be an addition. We don't have final amount, how much the addition would be. But it would, something would need to come off if we make a change like that.
Councilman Pestment, do you have a comment?
Here's going to be my suggestion. We're gonna do this at a public meeting in July. People can't quite visualize what is here. We're doing things in Mr. Glover's district. He understands that, he lives it every day. But this is the public throughout the county understanding. My suggestion is, I like the way the resolution is done, but I would also like to see a visual of every single one of those projects. A picture is worth a thousand words, as they say. Then the public can truly see what we're going to do with the public dollars for this referendum.
Okay, yeah, we can have a visual, we won't have the shown improvements on the visual, but a location map where this is and limits and stuff like that, we can have that.
Didn't you include that the last time we talked about this?
We did on the pathways and a little bit on Ladies Island, but we can refine that and have that available.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Glover?
Mrs. Fairley just raised a concern of mine. You mentioned something and you talk about maintenance and DOT maintaining. I've had a lot of comments about pathways being built and not really being maintained. And I said, well, the DOT is supposed to be maintaining it. They have a schedule that doesn't keep up with the grass. Is there any budget cost, nothing to do with the project, but future consideration for the county actually doing some maintaining those?
No, so right now, where we are-
Or even having the, some partnership with folks. I know the fire department on Ladies Island sort of come in and do some maintenance in that area and stuff, but-
So right now, the way all these are being designed and constructed is that they would meet DOT's standards and specifications. So at the end of it, we can turn them over to DOT for maintenance. Their maintenance schedule is maybe not the same as what other people's preference might be. They have a whole state of grass to mow. So if, if you wanted to subsidize that, you can do that either through agreements. For instance, Spanish Moss Trail, we have an agreement with the city of Beaufort and town of Port Royal. Inside their areas, they maintain the trail. In unincorporated, we maintain the trail as far as the grass. Possibly with the fire departments, that might could work. The other way to maintain it is to add additional general fund, funds for operations and additional maintenance above and beyond what DOT does. That's not contemplated in any of the sales tax, this is just for construction. But that would be future budgets and we could prepare whatever we needed to for the level of maintenance and service desired.
I think, I think we should look at all of those options and make some consideration because there's no sense putting the pathways and then nobody's walking them because it's unkept, so.
Yeah, so we can definitely look at that and we'll put that as a note for next year's budget considerations.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Brown?
How do we get the state to change the material that they, they want to submit now, right? And they, people in the area want pervious, non-pervious, whatever.
Yes, so they have a very, very extensive qualified products listing and lab and materials. And it goes through, submit a lab and materials report. And they have to qualify it and then approve it and then put it on their QPL, qualified products.
Well, what's going in now? I mean, I don't understand what you just said.
So if you want to substitute it, they do not have pervious pavement as a standard. You would have to get them to update their standard, like make a lab to their-
So how do we do that?
I'll just make a comment. Contact your state representative, it'd be a long battle, I think.
Oh, because our state senator lives just in that neighborhood across the street, so could we get him a, I mean?
I think it'd be a long battle.
And this, kind of getting off of subject on the-
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, alright, alright, I apologize.
And just to talk about, I mean, why don't we do all sidewalks pervious? It's because, and I've become an expert on this now since I've looked into this and found out, is the fact that pervious sidewalks have a life limit. They actually only last 20, 25 years when concrete lasts forever. They have to be maintained, that if you don't vacuuming them on a regular basis, they actually fill up with sand anyhow and just runs off the exact same way. They crumble, especially going over top of all these driveways that we're gonna be going over. We're gonna have a lot of crumbling that happens. They are also not as friendly for ADA people in wheelchairs and strollers because again, it is a rougher surface that you've got. So there's, there's a good side, but there's also the bad side to go into perv- And then it costs more to begin with and the state will maintain it. So, you know, like I said, if pervious is such a great thing, we'd do it everywhere, we'd build the bridge at Hilton Head out of pervious concrete, which again, why don't we ask for that?
Right, okay.
But there's a reason why. That's another whole subject and we'll have to process that.
But we're gonna talk about this more at the July County Council or August?
We're taking this list for final approval to July.
July, okay, alright, okay.
The Alljoy bids for that pathway project are coming to August PFC and subsequently September council meeting.
Oh, okay, not until September, okay, thank you.
Okay, any last questions?
Well-
Unless you, no, you can do some more.
He's got more.
Yeah, I want to walk out of here with, and Mike, walk out of here that is this, are there any desired changes to what we have in front of us? Because if not, the resolution that's attached in the backup would be what we would bring to be-
Can we bring the resolution up?
Yeah.
Because I just want to point out that it's specific about surfaces in the resolution. So there's a lot of specificity there that I think would be good to-
Yeah, so get it to the second page.
I think it's good, just the way it is.
Yeah.
I do have a comment. I mean, if Middle Road's not an option, I'd like to see Broad River moved up. That's just a personal, that's my district, so I'm being very appropriate.
If you want to swap Middle Road for Broad River, that's, this is just a, something for you guys to, jumping off point to have discussion. If you want to change stuff, we are welcome, whatever those thoughts and comments are. Yeah, so to Mike's point, you can see like Alljoy right there. Go up, it's a six-foot concrete sidewalk on the east side. And then it shifts to the west side once you get the shot at, or Thomas Lawton.
Jared, do you want to maybe briefly mention Salem Road since we had some sys and questions about that?
Yeah, so Salem, can you go to the, there's another document, Salem Road. I want to show you all how extensive this document is. So this document, it's, I don't know, 10 pages or so. So Jennifer Bragg did a really good job putting together all the backup information. But this is what I was alluding to, is we looked at both sides of the road. Presently, it's on the east side of the road and we're 65% designed. And you can see the cost, 2.6 million, and we'll be constructed with this in two years. The west side of the road is the 3.9 million dollars. Now, scroll down just a little bit. I want you guys, Ms. Howard knows this well, as I think Chairman Pestment, or Ms. Pestment, you were alluding to it. Not everybody knows it as well, but if you scroll down, there's a, there's like an aerial. I want you all to see.
Salem Road is behind Lowe's and there's a lot of apartments on Salem Road.
Yeah.
And new apartments coming in.
And that's the big part, keep going a little bit further. Alright, right there. I know it's really hard, I don't know if you can zoom in. Just the graphic, the picture. Okay, well, so just take my word for it, that there's a lot of apartments coming in right behind Lowe's as Ms. Howard was mentioning. And the request was for the road, the sidewalk to move to the other side of the road, which is the back end of those apartments. The front end has presently in their design, they're building apartments with access to 170. Salem is kind of on the back end of those apartments. There is one or two smaller department, apartments already on that road. So in the scope, we are providing a small sidewalk to collect those two apartments and then a crossover to get to our major pathway. That's what's in the specific plan that we have today. If we move it, that was their request, move it to the other side because of all the apartments. And you guys, I just pointed out what the impacts are. So if there's a desire to entertain that, we can do that. But again, that would cost extra money and we would have to look at other projects to trade for.
I appreciate your cost estimates, to me that is a very deciding factor, how much more it would cost. Leave it like it is for now.
Resolution, back to the resolution.
And you also discussed that with the city as well, that's probably a good point to bring up.
Yes, yes, so we did, after having a discussion with property owner, we went to the city and the city said they were indifferent. So they didn't have a preference whether it's on the east side or the west side. So again, as this prepared, it's an eight-foot concrete pathway on the east side, which is the closest to the marsh, all the way from 170 to Old Salem. And then it has that five-foot crossover to the one set of apartments and then a boardwalk over the creek.
What would be the timeline to get these completed? I know we ask you all the time, but-
Yes, so the good thing is with the set of projects that we have proposed, it's a much smaller scale, some of these projects.
Jared, you may want to bring up the spreadsheet that's got the status of each of them.
Sorry, we're switching back, Frank. We got a lot of good information, so thank you. As she's bringing it up, I'll describe it. So in short, a lot of these projects have, we're close to right-of-way on 60, 70% design. So if you go up there in the yellow, you can see Alljoy is being bid right now, we're 65%. The only one that's kind of not too far along is Burnt Church because we're repositioning that. We were doing the road widening along with the pathway, now we're just doing the pathway. And the rest of them are in bidding or close to design. You can see as you get further down, there's less work done. Joe Fraser didn't have any work done, so that would have been starting over. And then on all the roads on Ladies Island, we've got significant amount of design either going to right-of-way. Some of those will be up for construction very soon. All in all, how long will it take to get these done? As a frame of reference, being November 2026, there will be a substantial amount of these completed. Not all of them will be completed, but a large percentage of them will be completed or either under construction in two years.
The ones in yellow, correct? Only the ones in yellow.
Oh, okay, alright. By 2020?
So to hear that, Jennifer Bragg, our consultant, Middle Road there at the bottom is in 70% design. It's actually in right-of-way acquisition as well. So that was, we had four we had brought to you guys previously about starting their right-of-way acquisition. And so that one's gotta step up, so it's a little bit further than the 70% design.
And I think Old Salem Road is in your district, Councilman Dawson? And that's okay? What I had to comment on was Broad River Drive West.
What did you?
If there was, but, you know, if nothing falls out of the top, it wouldn't, not funny for it. Any other questions, comments, anything else you need from us today?
I have a couple, just two quick ones. One, is there gonna be a public comment section coming up before we conclude? And I'll just tell you the reason why. We got two folks here from Breeze, Brian and John. I think they may want to say something to us as a result of a board meeting we had the other day, that's one. And the other thing is, you talked about a bucket of money that may be left over that we can appropriate. Does that have to be done today or is that something we can do down the road?
Our goal is to have a good definition so we can deliver and execute all the projects. So our goal is to do that today. We don't have to. I mean, we can take some of these projects off the list and still have the 11 million dollars unallocated.
Right.
But it is publicly local sales tax that needs to be expended on each project list.
2018 is a long time to do, we get that. Is it possible, and I'm gonna throw it out there and I'll defer to my colleague down on the far left, is there any money that could be appropriated for the Seapine Circle out of that 11?
No.
No?
Yeah, so the termini for 2018 was from Moss Creek to Squier Park.
Understood, yeah, thank you, okay.
Well, just so, everything I've heard you say is there was 11 million, but you're recommending we use 8 million for the Ladies Island so that then in that bucket of money, there's only-
Well, so out of this, if I can, if you can get out of the Zoom. So in what we're proposing and showing, it is using all of the 11. So there was 9 million-ish, 8 and a half, 9 million dollars from Ladies Island. And then 2.5 go in towards additional pathways.
Good point, Mark, thank you.
Councilman, we did have, he, I think he was here during our public comment period earlier. And we did not, we'd have to amend the agenda. We only, we had two public comment periods today.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Last round, anybody?
From Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, anything you'd like to say?
Not on this topic. I think we have one more topic to, to cover.
All right, I think we have direction. Thank you, appreciate all the discussion.
Okay, you ready for the next one?
Yes.
278 update.
So I wanted to bring to you, to everyone's attention, we, we know we got the CIB grant funding earlier this week, which was good news. Subsequent to that, Secretary Powell from the DOT reached out to us to, to let us know that there's an opportunity for funding for the large bridge project, the Bridge Investment Program, BIP. It was published in June 2025. And there's some details, but what he has asked is that this would now be the state's project to be considered for this bridge investment program. The issue is that the grant application is due on August 1st. And the county would be an applicant. But we, the administration intended to work with the secretary to bring a grant agreement or a grant application to county, to council. If we can get there by July 14th, if not, we may have to do a special call.
Meeting to meet the deadline. I would recommend that, just when you consider the amount of money that could be involved in this. But it, it could actually allow for the completion of the westbound structure as well as other improvements within the 278 corridor. So this could be quite a bit of additional funds to come in that we would leverage from the 2018 sales tax, 80 million, along with 120 million from the CIB. Secretary Powell has already kind of worked this in the, behind the scenes in Columbia. So our, all the right folks are now aware, we're going to be putting in for this, this grant. But I wanted to let you all know so that you can expect that to come later this month, so.
I don't understand why this popped up.
She's got a, she's got a question, wait, wait.
I have a question about why it popped up, I know that. I, I want to know if we, if we continue with both in east and westbound, will there be two separate bridges as opposed to one big wide bridge?
Answers on that?
I'll tell you my, my preferences, two separate ones. I don't want to cloud your judgment on that, but I did want you to know what I thought would be a good idea.
No, I understand. We'd have to work with engineering, DOT on that. What's, what's also constricting is, we're kind of threading a needle here between being able to apply and then also timelines and where our CIB grant that we just got approved, or we had a 2031 completion schedule. So this would be still within that timeframe. In order to fit it, we have all the environmental work and design work completed on the one single lane structure that was agreed upon as our preferred alternative. That would be the quickest avenue. That structure as previously that we basically set on the shelf in December is the one lane.
One law, wide bridge instead of two separate bridges.
Yeah, that's, that's the documents that we have right now that are ready and available. For consideration, to break them apart, we'd have to evaluate that with DOT and Federal Highway to see what that would look like as far as time is.
So they are encouraging us to go back in with the original design, is that it?
That would be the route that is easiest to execute, yes.
So I don't understand why all of a sudden this came up within August 1st. We've spent months agonizing over the CIB, the state, Senator Davis, and now here we are, June 26th, and this comes out. What's, please respond.
Yeah, and I could tell you that, you know, this came about on June 2nd, this, this publication. And then, you know, Secretary Powell is waiting to see how the CIB was going to proceed on this. If we had not gotten the CIB funding, now that we got the CIB funding, this is an opportunity. But obviously, we would bring this back to you all and it would take a county council vote to submit the application. So you all will have an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Other questions, Councilman Rins? You had your hand up?
I, I think, Mr. Moore, you answered it. You're going to get us upfront what this means so we're not confused.
Correct.
Because this is totally new and it's going back to something that was railed against for a while by a number of people. So we got to really focus on communication.
Understood. And just bear in mind, this is, you know, federal program. So there's no assurance, even if we put in for, we'll get it, but.
Is it, we're competing against 50 states?
It's a national.
Thank you.
Project.
This is.
So I mean, it's an opportunity. It's presented itself. I would be remiss if I did not bring it to you all, but it'll ultimately be council's decision on how to proceed on this.
Okay.
Let me just ask quickly, Madam Chairman. I, I say pursue it, but I also know you may need manpower and other resources in order to get the application in on a timely fashion.
To your question, DOT, I believe, is, is working most of that.
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss, just, we wanted to present it to you guys as high level, let you know about the opportunity, the mechanics and the manpower to get it done. We'd work that out with DOT between our staff and their staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we slow down the eastbound bridge because of time scheduling and?
So, and this is why, back to your question about the one bridge. So the one bridge, we were moving it forward. We had a significant amount of design and we sat it, when we didn't have the sales tax pass, we sat it off to the side. We've come up with the concept with the three-lane bridge and that's the project to date that just got approved. That's 10% design right now, conceptual. So over the next couple of months, we're going to have to move that project forward. So just time schedule, if we applied in August, and typically they kind of give you an indication whether you make it through the first part of the process by the end of the year. And then in the spring is usually when the awards are made and announced, so six or nine months from now. That's the time that we're going to have to do the environmental evaluation and the updated design on this three-lane project. So in essence, they would be one sitting still, the new three-lane would catch up. And then if we get a decision, if we applied and got a decision one way or the other, we haven't lost any time in our overall project delivery schedule. And basically whichever horse is selected, we would carry out. That's the opportunity.
So stay tuned, stay tuned to what you find out and you'll let us know.
Yeah, we will speak with Secretary Powell tomorrow following this discussion and then we'll keep you all informed.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, this is new news. Thank you.
Yes, it is.
All right, anything else? Let's adjourn. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.